Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Roll call?
Attendance is noted.
Okay, thanks. Approval of the minutes of July 23rd, 2012, and the annual bike/walk tour of August 6th, 2012.
Second.
Okay. First and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries, thank you. This is an opportunity for the citizens to address the commission. There's anybody that has something that's not on the agenda. Okay? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number one, which is consideration of a request for conditional use permit to allow lighted ball fields and new building bleachers and backstop at 7001 Harriet Avenue, Richfield High School. Staff?
Thank you Chair Jabbs. Richfield High School has requested permission to install lights at the existing ball field adjacent to the high school. Additionally, they plan to construct new bleachers, a press box, and concession building, and to replace the existing backstop. New bleachers will curve around home plate and will take advantage of the grade change between the street and the field. The press box and concession building will sit at the top of the rise behind the bleachers. The new backstop will be of similar design and height as the redesigned city fields at Lincoln Park. The backstop will be approximately 38 feet tall. The recommended action on this is approval of the conditional use permit. I'm going to go through the policy reasons for that recommendation. Outdoor facilities related to schools are conditionally permitted in the R District, provided they meet the following conditions. Number one, that outdoor recreation facilities designed for group activities shall be set back at least 40 feet from any lot line. The site is currently non-conforming in regards to this requirement. The existing bleachers are set back 27 feet from the south lot line, so therefore any new facilities, any new bleachers, could not encroach closer into that non-conforming setback. Two, buffering shall be provided to mitigate noise and adverse visual impacts on adjacent properties. The field is an existing facility. The proposed changes will modernize it and improve its appearance, and should not have an adverse impact on noise. Number three, lighted playing fields shall be permitted only upon demonstration that off-site impacts can be substantially mitigated. Light levels from the proposed lighting would not exceed .3-foot candles on the south side of 72nd Street, and this is where the light would be the greatest. General city standards require that light levels remain below 1.0 at either the center of an adjacent street or residential property line. So, the proposed lighting there is one-third, a little less than one-third of what would be allowable in terms of intensity. The findings necessary to issue a conditional use permit are as follows, and this is A through H. A, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and this property is designated in the comp plan for school use. B, the proposed use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning code and purposes of the zoning district. The purpose of the R Single Family District regulations is to protect and preserve the single-family residential character of the area, and it is felt that this does not negatively impact that. C, the proposed use is consistent with any officially adopted redevelopment plans or urban design guidelines. There are no official redevelopment plans for the site, so that doesn't apply. D, the proposed use is or will be in compliance with the performance standards in the city code. The building, design, and lighting comply with Performance Standards section of the code. E, the proposed use will not have undue adverse impacts on governmental facilities, utilities, services, or existing or proposed improvements, and no such impacts are noted. F, the use will not have undue adverse impacts on the public health, safety, or welfare, and again, there are no adverse impacts noted. G, there is a public need for such use at the proposed location. Ball fields obviously are necessary for the high school athletics program, so we do feel like there is a public need. H, the proposed use meets or will meet the specific conditions set by the code for the granting of such conditional use permits, and we believe that's addressed in conditions for approval that I'll hit in a second. Again, just touching on the critical issues, the proposed changes will really be an improvement to an existing facility. No significant lights will spill over into the residential properties in the occasion that the fields are lit, and currently, the Richfield High School baseball team does not play night games, and I don't know if that's intended to change. I have not heard that it is. And there have been no complaints regarding the existing ball field in any of city records. So with that, I believe that there are several representatives of the school district here, and this is a public hearing, so I would stand for any questions you might have for me.
A general one, but one that I think, if you can, no pun intended, shed some light on. Can you give a comparison when you're talking foot candles and lighting lumens and so on? General streetlight is how much?
I can't.
Okay. I tried to look it up, and I think it's like .3. Does that sound about correct for a regular Cobra head streetlight? I was trying to find it and...
Well, yeah, I would imagine it's much higher than .3 at the light source.
Yes.
And as you go further away from the light source, it would obviously decrease. But I don't know, that's something we can have answered for the city council, or if, you know, if you want to have this conversation continue to find the answer, but I just don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have an answer to that?
Oh, good. You're better than the internet.
Yeah, but you just addressed your name and tell us who you were.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Craig Gallup, Musco Sports Lighting, and I can help you answer that question. Most streetlights, parking lot lights are about, in the general area, you know, 50 feet around the source of the light, or 50 feet. They're about, it's about three to four-foot candles of light. So it's considerably more light from a streetlight than would be from the lighting of the fields on the homes.
Okay. I just thought that it would help the general public get an idea.
Give you kind of another comparison. A full moon is about two-tenths of a foot candle.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind, could you just jot your name down on the piece of paper?
Yes, thank you.
Maureen, did you have a question?
Yes, somebody did contact me on this. Right now, the school is not playing night games? Does the school plan on playing night games?
Isn't that planned?
So why are we having lighting?
Up to microphone, please.
Sorry.
I'm Michael Schwartz, Business Manager for Richfield Public Schools. The reason, as I understand it, for, and this would be school board members that had this conversation, was that if we're going to improve the facilities, we should improve it the best we can, and so that would, the feeling was that if at some point we, night games would be needed, that we would have a facility that would be able to provide that.
You're not planning on renting it out?
That might be an option. At this point, I don't, I can't answer that. The athletic director would have to...
Because it was somebody that lived close by, and they were concerned on a school night, the noise keeping the kids awake. Now, that's not directly related to what we're doing, but putting lights in will allow night games, which will therefore potentially increase noise.
At this point, I think the latest that they start is 4:15. Yeah, the season would be over, at least for the public school, would be over in June. The end of May, beginning of June.
No May games?
Oh, I'm just saying the season would end. I don't know if they... Yeah, but yeah, they would play in May.
Well, I mean, that's what her concern would be if they were renting it out, that it would...
I don't think they would rent it out during the season. They might have playoffs, and I don't know if that's when they do that, when they play those games.
Well, she was concerned.
Tom?
Tom? Notice was sent out to everybody within 350 feet or more of the school. Were there any responses, complaints, compliments?
No, to my knowledge, there were. Well, first of all, yes, notice was sent out within 350 feet to all properties, and to my knowledge, there were no comments, either positive or negative, received by staff.
Mr. Schwartz? Right now, lights are available down at Donaldson Park. If the school had a night game, they could, in all likelihood, play at Donaldson Park if they needed a lighted field?
I guess if the city approved, because it's not, that's a city park.
Sure. But right now, the school, you're saying, the team, baseball team, teams, do not play night games, and to the best of your knowledge, they have no intention of playing night games?
At this point, they don't play night games. If they do, they're not playing it on, in Richfield. If they do, I think there's about four fields, four fields in the metro area that have lights currently.
Okay. It would seem unlikely if you're going to make this kind of an investment and an effort to put these lights in, that you would put them in and not use them. So it's pretty logical to assume that at some point or another, you're going to use them. Commissioner Scalia makes a good point. Do you plan to, as it was with the artificial turf football field, that you would perhaps rent this out, or derive some kind of revenue from the new lighted fields, either from other teams, or having tournaments, or additional games for the high school teams?
We, the option would be always to try to increase our revenue source, so yes, that's there. At this point, I had a conversation with the city about this. Their feeling was that unlike a football field with turf, there's not quite as many, as much of a draw to, for a baseball field. But we do have the Legion that uses the field. I don't know if they would consider playing night games or not. I don't know. But absolutely, we would try to get revenue from renting out the field.
Okay. Has anyone asked the Legion team whether or not they would try to initiate night games at the high school field if the lights were available? I mean, that would have an impact on the neighborhood. I personally would think that that certainly should deserve an answer, the anticipated use. We could gauge the impact that it might have on the neighborhood. I'm disappointed that there isn't somebody from either the teams or the athletic department here to answer those kinds of questions.
Yeah, I apologize, but I don't have that answer. We'd have to go through the athletic director.
I assume that the nights that it's not being played on, the lights are off, correct?
Yes.
And is there a time that you've decided that the lights would go off if a team was playing on there?
We don't have any policy on that. We, I don't think we've gotten that far. We don't even know if we can put lights in, so I think that's a little bit premature.
I think my recommendation would be that you go back, I mean, probably talk to Jim Topisoff, and then whatever the designation is for Donaldson, become the same standard if, as such, to make sure that we're not on all night.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Other questions?
Well, coincidentally, I did talk to the city about the regulations with regard to Donaldson, and my understanding is that they are to be turned off at 11:00, and the parks themselves are, their curfew is 11:00. So, there's been no discussion about that kind of a standard for this particular field?
We haven't had that, any policy discussion on this. When we were looking at redesigning the field, we did put lights in as an alternate bid. We didn't think we were going to have enough money with the grant to do that, and then it was board initiated to use some revenue from the rental of the football field to help pay for the lights. And so, this has really sort of just come last minute, and so we really haven't had that discussion.
Can you share with us some of the arguments that were brought before the school board with regard to the pros and cons of this?
Well, the only thing that was made clear, I don't know that was pros or cons, I mean, the feeling from the school, from some school board members was that if we were going to renovate the facility, we should do it, do everything that we can to make it a world-class facility. And so the feeling was that if we were going to do it, we should add the lights at this time. The point, the pro for doing that is that it's more cost-effective to do it when you're renovating the rest of the field, so it makes sense to do it at that time instead of doing it after the fact. The con was that we didn't have a source of revenue, a specific source of dedicated revenue, whether it was grant funding or capital money from the school district. So, the proposal came up was, why can't we use some of the revenue that we're generating from the football field since it's more than what we had anticipated? So, we're not buying the lights outright, or we wouldn't buy the lights outright, it'd be leased, leased purchase for six years.
Do you anticipate that these changes to the field are going to enhance attendance? And is there going to be an incentive for people to park along the residential streets there more than there is now? Where do people park when they come to that field?
Well, they park on the streets along 72nd.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
They'll be parking along 72nd Street, and by, there's parking spaces by the bus garage. There's parking spaces. Will it enhance attendance? I mean, that's the hope, that more people would come out to see the team or for the I think some of the comments that you are making here definitely need to be reviewed by the school district, so I think comments that are made here will be taken back and communicated to the athletic director, superintendent, and the school board.
One more, one more item, if I may. In item two, Mr. Stark read about buffering shall be provided to mitigate noise and adverse individual impacts, but makes no mention of specifically how that's going to happen. Could you share with us what kind of improvements you might be making to the facility that would do that, mitigate the noise and visual impact?
I do know the field is below grade, so that will help mitigate it somewhat. The stands are facing out, away from the residential housing, but we got Russ George.
Hi, Russ George, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. Hi, Bob. Yeah, it's, the field is six foot below grade already, so even right now, we don't get hardly any noise off that field with the crowd that's there. And then the backstop will be a, it's not going to be the conventional chain link, it'll be a netting, like I have over at middle school, along 75th Street. That kind of helps divert the noise somewhat, too. So between the two, I don't think we're going to get a lot of noise, any extra noise than we already have on a normal baseball game.
Thank you.
Tom?
Well, discussion.
Maureen, did you have a question?
Mr. Schwartz? Just general housekeeping and a question, maybe you can help satisfy our thirst for knowledge. How does it work? So the board, the school board identifies a need, right, and this is appropriate use? So they bring it to you to, you know, acquire funding and work this out? We got something from cornerstone out of Stillwater here, this light plan. Can you just enlighten us as to, you know, just a little bit of the process from, you know, we got this need, and also eventually, we actually get the lights?
Well, actually, it started, the way it started was that the baseball team and the boosters for the baseball team and the athletic director applied for a grant with Henbun County. In addition to that, they got a grant from the Minnesota Twins. And so we had a certain dollar amount, I think it was $365,000, to renovate the field, put in new bleachers, and put a backstop in. And so that's, that was the part that initiated the whole piece of it. We put the lights in because that was part of the grant proposal, and so there were other things, too. There was the, we were going to renovate the bullpen area, we did the dugouts. Those were all part of enhancing the field. And some of that, we decided we were able to do ourselves, because again, when the bid came in, it wasn't enough to cover all the needs that we, or all the requests that we wanted to do. We just felt that the lighting was $180,000, was quite a big dollar amount for us to cover. So that's when, we have school board members who are on the construction committee, who, when the bid was open, made a comment about, can't we do this alternative funding source for the lighting? So, that's when we started to pursue that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carries. Okay, discussion? Maureen?
Well, I didn't speak necessarily in opposition to this. I just think it was with the recognition that, and this is what the parent had told me, too, is the belief that with an upgraded ballpark, that it would be available probably for rental. And I'm not opposed to that. Lord knows, the school needs all the money it can find wherever. I just would have liked to have seen some mention made or some sensitivity to ensure that this would not impact the neighborhood. Something would say that no games on school nights until school is over, something like that. So I have, per se, I'm not in opposition to the light, I just wanted to see some sensitivity.
Tom?
I guess I'm inclined to almost propose that we table this until such time that we can have some serious answers to those types of questions. This is a conditional use permit, and some of the conditions that we might want to put on are how often can be used, how long the lights can be on, things like that, and yet we have no one here from the athletic department who can answer the questions on how often this field might be used, whether or not they are fully intending on renting it out, using it during the summer, using it on into the fall for town teams, the Legion team, or any other team that might want to take advantage of a lighted field in this part of the cities. There is also a lighted field down at Donaldson that the city has, and it's available. It's used for other teams. Certainly, the high school could make an effort, contact the city, and see if that field could be available for games. I think right now, Holy Angels uses that field. So, I mean, I don't see it absolutely proven that there's a burning need for this particular field, but I'm more troubled by the fact that there isn't representation here from the athletic department, or any of the team, or any of the boosters who are advocating this use. And until such time as they are present, and we can ask questions about the use of the field, which directly impacts a conditional use permit, I would, I would say, why don't we table this?
Is there a time deadline sensitivity to our dealing with this issue with regard to what your plans are?
If we're going to get it done yet this fall, we were hoping that the planning commission would approve it at this meeting, and then the city council would approve it at the September 11th meeting. If that doesn't happen, we probably can't get that done until, we wouldn't be able to start construction until the spring, until after the winter. I will say, if you allow me, Mr. Chair, in regards to renting out the field, yes, I think there is a plan to rent out the field. I don't know what the specific is, but if the, again, as I said before, the opportunity presents itself, I'm sure we would take advantage of it. If the commission wants to put certain uses about not playing night games in certain months of the year, I mean, I guess I would almost rather you put conditions on this. If you're going to go ahead and allow this permit to go ahead, I'd almost encourage you to put whatever conditions you're going to put on now, and then let us move on.
Gordon?
So, I guess the, from my perspective, you know, our function is to evaluate whether or not it met the conditions. I'm likewise disappointed that there's no neighborhood input, but rather than substitute my judgment for the neighborhood, I don't know that it's fair to apply a positive or negative connotation to what the neighborhood might think.
I didn't, I didn't say anything about the neighborhood.
Were I a neighborhood resident, or actually in the neighborhood, I think I potentially would be concerned about a more intense use of a space that if this were a business, we wouldn't grant a permit because there isn't any parking, aside from relying on residential streets and an adjacent bus garage. And I have been through that area when games are going on, and even with the attendance that's there, with limited scheduling, it becomes pretty congested in that space. But despite that, I have to agree with the staff's report that the conditions necessary for approving the permit have been met, and it's not our place to substitute our judgment of what should have been done or could have been done with district dollars, or whether or not there's a need, any more than there, it's our place to say that we don't like a particular type of food, so we don't think that restaurant should be there. Yes, that's my two cents.
Okay, well, I guess my take on it is that point number two, I just don't think you've met it at this point, okay? The buffering piece, and I think that has to go along with, I think you needed to come in here with some, with some rules of how you're going to play the game. And I think that says, you know, you're going to use it every night, Monday through Friday, or you're going to use it from this time to this time. or you're going to use it from this time to this time. And when, you know, as far as the buffering is concerned, again, we come back to the, to the lighting and just everything that goes along with that. So I think that, you know, when do the lights go off, et cetera, are all parts of the game that if we're going to issue this, I think are a big piece of it. It's point number two. And if it's not met to ours, to our ideals, I don't think it's there then.
Sure. I, I would agree with you. I don't particularly care at the moment, it's not germane to the discussion, how you pay for it, talking about the use of it. Right now, if we put on a condition that there can be no more than, than four high school or school-related games, Richfield teams, no more than four, lights can go on whatever time they are necessary to play a safe game, they go off by 10 o'clock. And until such time as somebody can come back and prove that you need increased hours and more game time, that will be the condition.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just make some comments, a couple of comments? One is, there won't be any more games during the school year than there are now, I mean, for Richfield. Richfield plays 34 games in their schedule. The other point of reference is that the grant that we get from Henbun County, the project must be completed by January 31st, 2013. I mean, sorry, July 31st, 2013.
Mr. Chair? And, and setting those conditions of it cannot be used more than four lighted games during the year, or Richfield teams would not delay your project whatsoever.
During the school year?
Yeah.
During the year?
Pardon?
During the school year or during the year?
During, during the, the school year. What, whether you're playing lighted games now or not is not the point. The point is, is that if we allow you to put lights in, I am just, as a matter of discussion, putting that before this body, saying, okay, if we have to discuss conditions, let's discuss no more than four lighted games by a Richfield team, high school team. I'm assuming the, the middle school or junior varsity wouldn't be playing on the field. But if they were, there's no more than four Richfield District's games played on the field that would require lighting. Lights can go on when you need lights for a safe game, they go off at 10 o'clock.
Bob?
I might be willing to go along with some stipulations as to restrictions on activity, but I'm certainly not prepared at this time to go along with the kinds of things that Mr. Rubline just enumerated. I'm, I'm looking for a solution. Obviously, we're looking for information here, and I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to put this on the agenda for the, for the second Monday in September, so the city council could still rule on it in September and move forward that way. I'd rather do that than try and come up with some rules and regulations. I, for one, I can't, the, the 10 o'clock thing, why would it be different from what Donaldson Park has? On the other hand, I believe there should be some limit as to how long in the evening the lights can be on. Maybe you watch the Little League game, World Series game on TV Sunday where the two teams scored 19 runs back-to-back in consecutive half innings combined. So, or do you have a doubleheader during a tournament? Or I can see all kinds of scenarios that would lead to an undesirable effect if, unless we know what kind of use this place is going to be put to. It could have a major impact on the neighborhood.
But that's exactly the point, Bob. We don't know those conditions. There's nobody here that can tell us those conditions, yet we're being asked to approve this conditional use permit without putting any conditions on it. I don't think that that's a very consistent way of handling these things. Right now, I'm saying, okay, fine, if they need to go forward with this, and they need the approval in order to meet their deadlines, then let's put some conditions on this that are reasonable. They, right now, they're saying that there aren't any night games planned. Okay, fine, well, what if they start up night games? Well, the condition is you can only have four of them. They start up night games, how long can we keep the lights on? We're saying 10 o'clock. If they need to change that, they come back to this body and ask for modification of a conditional use permit. But in the interim, they can go forward knowing the conditions we've put on it, they can reconstruct the field, they can put in the lights, they just can't turn them on more often than four games and longer than 10 o'clock. If you have an alternative to that, give it to me.
Chair? Well, I do need just one clarification, sorry. So are you saying four games for the whole season, or are you saying four games a week?
Four lighted games.
A week?
For the entire school year.
Well, it's, that's a little bit out of whack.
Chair?
I just want to point out my agreement with Commissioner Hall, not as to the deciding
another night, but the danger in spot zoning for use, and the, ultimately, that's not our role. So deciding how a particular parcel is used when that's inconsistent with how their neighbors, another fine Richfield educational institution may utilize their property, and in fact inconsistent with how the city itself uses its property, I, I think that presents some serious concern.
Okay, so, okay, agree. So what's the, what kind of restrictions are put on the football stadium right now as far as lights? Anything?
Nothing.
There's nothing at all?
Normally, my guys have the lights off by 10 o'clock. Games are usually done by 9:30. We go out, straighten up, clean up, and everything is dark by 10:00 on the football field. Very seldom it's, the lights are on after 10:00.
And you're only talking one game a week, though, is what you're talking night times?
Yeah, it's just like five games a season.
Soccer, soccer, too, is on that field. They put the lights on.
Well, soccer's on, usually on Saturdays, and then they're renting out the turf in the evenings on Sunday, but they're off there by nine on Sunday nights.
Okay.
And currently, the baseball team only plays four night games.
Okay.
A season. And we use Donaldson Park.
Well, it makes it a little more difficult considering that the football stadium doesn't have anything against it. So I, from my perspective, it changes quite a bit. If, you know, I guess I still, again, though, would, I mean, I think the main concern here is to make sure that the neighbors are good and that there's no issues here. So if, in fact, you agree to, my proposal would be that part of the recommendation would say that 10 o'clock is lights out. And relative to that, I think if you get to that point, and then, I'm not sure I can restrict the number of games that they play there, because we don't know what's going to go on as far as weather, you know, et cetera. So I hate to put them under that circumstance where all of a sudden they're being evaluated because the fifth game is here and they can't play because there's only five games, okay? When in fact, we have no control over what Mother Nature does to us. So I think the, the biggest thing in my book is the 10 o'clock, or to make sure that it's there. That's me.
Okay.
So, Marine?
Since I kind of opened this, I guess I was just looking for some kind of compromise thing that we would permit this go through, but we would just caution the school that as they move forward and come to the time when they want to rent it, that they would follow the similar policies that the city rec department does. For example, Donaldson's at 11:00. And that they would be very sensitive to noise levels and really consider whether you ever want to rent it out on a school night for a game that could go as late as 10:00.
You know.
I mean, that's all I wanted was just some sensitivity. And following policies that are already in place in the community.
And I think that's reasonable. Mr. Hall knows that we've already had issues with neighbors around the middle school, and we've, even though it was a little controversial, we still got that taken care of with, with our pool and the hood on the air, air handler. The last thing we want to do is upset the neighbors. So we would do everything that we could to avoid that and to work with the neighbors. I, I can't say this for sure, but I wouldn't think during the, the baseball season for the high school that we would be renting out that, that facility. The only thing I could see is if they would have playoff games, and that would be at the end of the season. So, and probably, I think baseball playoffs are, are even after the school year. I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, they're right, right at the first part of June.
So, you know, I, I'm not here to guarantee anything, but one thing I can say is that the last thing we want to do is upset neighbors. So we take concerns from neighbors very seriously, and we respond to their concerns.
Okay, anything else, Tom?
Well, you know, asking them voluntarily to go along with it, I mean, this is a conditional use permit. We are within the jurisdiction to put some of these restrictions on. If you don't like limiting it to four games a year, then give me another number. If, you know, 10 o'clock is not good, give me another number. If we're going to say they have to follow the same policy as what's in a, at Donaldson, then let's say that they have to follow the same policy as what is governing Donaldson Field right now. It is a conditional use permit. We can put a condition on it. So let's spell it out so that everybody knows what it is, and if they need to change it, they come back here and ask for a modification of a conditional use permit. That is the process.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Josh.
You know, I actually, I actually like the proposal. I'm looking forward to the games with lights. I, I do have a problem with the, the spot zoning, as Gordon brought up. But knowing that the football field, which is right there, has little to no limitations on it, and the plausibility that we're playing a high school game on a Friday night and a soccer game on Saturday night, and it's rented out on, on Sunday evenings, well, there's three right there in one week for a football field. If the neighborhood had concerns, this is the opportunity to, to voice them. And, and this isn't the first time the neighborhood has heard that they're looking to put lights in at the field, because I personally remember several articles in the Sun Current where there was a host of communications and frustrations on the financial end of things as opposed to the logistic end of things. So this isn't going to come as a surprise to somebody. I, I think that we've heard what the community has to say. We, we heard it this evening, and it's the same things that we hear often until there's a problem, and then we come back and we'll, we address it then. I don't think I'm going to hypothesize as to what may or may not end up being a concern for a community. This place is playing baseball here for decades, and I'm guessing that the lights aren't going to change a, a whole lot for the vast majority of the folks. The folks that are upset with parking now are going to be upset with parking two years from now. The folks that are upset with noise and carousing and having a good time are going to be upset with those things two years from now. So I, I think we've met these requirements, and I think as we found out this winter, that when there is a problem in the neighborhood, the school board does respond to it, because let's not forget that they've got their own elected body that has to, to deal with these issues. And for those reasons, I'm going to move the action.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Since we're discussing the movement, and I didn't get the chance to ask my questions of the body, I would ask to deny the movement so we can continue the discussion.
Well, I believe our option is to, to, I mean, we have got a motion and a second. The option is, is to vote for it, and if it goes down, take it forward. Is there any way to deny it?
That's what I'm basing my vote on, is what I'm trying to say, and I'm encouraging the other commissioners to vote no, so we can continue the conversation that ended prematurely, in my opinion.
Is there any other way to handle that, John?
You know, if the makers of the motion would, would be willing to withdraw their motion to allow continued discussion, that would be the other way.
That's an option.
Seconded.
Yeah. So now, just if, if there's any further discussion. So really, you could discuss the way it is at this point.
You know, I, I guess, I think the chair has a little latitude.
Yeah, well, I guess the one thing that I still, you know, and I, I agree with you, okay, from a standpoint, but I still think the 10 o'clock bit, even though there isn't anything for the football fields, I think we should have some say on that. And it's either, it's an either, it goes with what Richfield's current status is for the park and recs, which is 11 o'clock, but at least some limitation on it, because somewhere down the road, it's going to, it will come back.
So now we're going to treat the sports inequally?
No, we're not. We're not. They say they shut off at 10 o'clock anyhow, so.
But it's not a regulation or requirement.
So, it's what?
It's not a regulation or requirement, it's just practice.
No, it's not.
So they've been good stewards up to this point.
Here's, here's the difference, Josh, is that it's coming to a new neighborhood, okay? And granted, there's nobody here right at this point, okay? But I still think we have an obligation to make sure that the neighborhood is taken care of. And point number two in here says that we need to make sure there's a buffer. And the buffer in this case, I think, is the hours of, of lighting. And, you know, everything else, I've been at those fields tons of times, so I understand how everything, the sound all goes towards the, towards the outside, and it's not coming back towards the neighborhood. But I think the one piece that still kind of sits with me as kind of an irritation is the light people, piece, okay? And I think it should be 10 o'clock. Okay, that's my perspective, only from, if I was a neighborhood sitting around there, that's where I'd be, okay? Too bad they're not here, but I guess I got to speak for them.
So I, Chair Jabs, I'd only point out two things. One is that ultimately, I think it's city council's purview to decide what the acceptable hours of operation for athletic utilization is, to the extent that, that that body doesn't self-regulate. And I'm confident that the city itself, or that the, rather, school district itself has facilities use policies that, that are quite extensive, that go into what the hours of operation are, and ultimately, those are approved by the school board, which accepts feedback from the community in which it's located on how they should use their facilities. So I, I do think to suggest that this is a one-stop, and, and once it leaves here, it's, it's gone, I, I think it, it's not entirely true. But, but the other thing that I would point out, Commissioner Rubline's suggestion that we offer on what I potentially view as an unduly restrictive regime over the top of this, and then suggests that it's a good use of taxpayer dollars for the school district to pay for additional conditional use permit amendments to come back here, and the city to send out additional neighborhood notices anytime that a change is going to be made, and that we substitute something that's unduly restrictive at the outset in order to let it go forward, I, I just can't think that, I don't think that should fly.
It'll be good that you keep that in mind every other time a conditional use permit comes before this body, then.
Okay, Bob?
Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd make a motion to amend this, to have activities on the field restricted to those restrictions that apply to city facilities.
Just a point of order, the, the previous motion would have to be acted upon before any other motions could be entertained.
Friendly amendment?
Beg your pardon?
There was a motion by Rub, seconded by Vizecki, to approve the recommended action. So that would have.
I'm moving to amend it.
Yeah. Can, can we have a friendly amendment? Is that in order?
If they agree, they'd have to agree.
No, they don't.
Do an amendment?
If there's, if there's no second, it'll fail. If there's a second, then we deal with the amendment.
Wouldn't the appropriate step be, though, to vote the first issue and finish it?
No, because then it's done.
Yeah. So I need a reading, I'm sorry.
I move to amend the main motion to apply the same restrictions to the activities on this field as are applicable to.
I believe Sturgis' the books are in the cupboard. Mr. Chair, just, I, I would like to just point out that one of the comments made by Commissioner Schuler was that she was, he was not allowed to make comments and hasn't seemed fit to jump in here and give his comments, so I'd like to give him a moment to, to do that. Questions or comments that you?
I think I was amending a motion.
You were, and. You were, and we're looking up something on that.
So, let's just wait for just a second to get a reading on this.
So, I'm going to read, if the motion might have been put in another way that would be substantially, this is kind of contradictory to me, if the motion might have been put in another way that would be substantially different than it is amendable. On the other hand, if a change in the wording would make the motion a different kind of motion, it is not amendable. For example, to try to amend the motion, postpone.
So, it would seem that it's amendable? Yeah. So, so there's been a, there's been a motion made to amend a motion, and right now, that's pending a second.
His amendment would be pending a second?
Yes.
If it were not seconded, the amendment would die?
Correct.
Correct. If it is amended, or as you proposed and seconded, we have to vote on that amendment, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The motion. We have to vote on the motion.
On the motion or his amendment?
Well, if his amendment isn't seconded.
If it is seconded.
Then we'd have to vote on that.
Amendment. So, that's all we're waiting for right now?
Yes.
Is a second to Mr. Hall's amendment?
That's clear, that nothing can happen until there's a second.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I guess I have a question on Mr. Hall. I'll second it if we can word it a little better. I would make the motion to approve this lighting as long as any rental agreements that may come in the future would conform to existing community policies, meaning the city. Something to that effect.
Am I mistaken, but I think Bob's related to everything, rental or school use. That's what I understood.
That's correct.
So, it's kind of covered.
Okay, rental and school use.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner Hall, could you tell me again what your motion was? I didn't get it down. Your suggested amendment.
Well.
It's simply, isn't it, Bob, if I'm wrong, friendly amendment to basically abide by the city, the rules that govern the city facilities?
Similar city facilities, yes.
On the hours of lighting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I have seconded that.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, call the vote. All in favor of adopting this with the friendly amendment that says that we abide by the?
Point of order, wouldn't we vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion?
I believe so.
Is that what we do? Okay, okay, vote on, okay. Very good. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it. Okay, so, voting on the original amendment. The amendment, I'm sorry, the amendment. Thank you, thank you. Okay, additional words. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Who had no? Two? Okay, very good. So, that passes and is in there. So, now we're back to the original amendment with the, or the original motion, motion with the amendment, okay? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
One? No? Okay, passes. Thank you. Thank you.
I would just suggest, you know, that this is going to be in front of the city council in two weeks. We have a council member here. You got a flavor for a lot of the questions that were asked tonight. I would suspect you would receive a lot of the same kinds of questions in a couple of weeks and maybe be prepared to answer those.
Okay, moving on to new business. Any new business? Okay, seeing none. Any old business? None? Okay. Leah Sun reports, Community Services Advisory Commission. Tom?
There was no meeting in August.
Okay, thank you. City Council?
One decision of note was the discussion about the Comcast contract, and that has precluded our use of the Eden Prairie taping facility that Comcast provided. The contract has gone, is going forward, I believe, with all city concurrence. I have learned since then that the city has already made arrangements for another facility to be available, and so the community service programming should continue.
Commissioner Hall, can I make an addition? Just to mention, with the city council, we did have a joint work session to discuss the scope and process, timing for the development and implementation of a housing policy for Richfield. So, this is pretty big and important. So, if people are interested in being involved, there'll be more to come about that. We've already decided to get a future teller. They're going to spend our money, your money, on the future teller to help us decide what the future is going to be. And that's all based on the Met Council's need for us to have more housing. So, I'm looking forward to offering maybe a hypnotist that helps people, helps us, you know, insist on that.
Just a word of clarification. It's a futurist.
Future teller. No, futurist. You heard it here.
May effectively be the same thing, but it's a different word.
Lot more to it.
One has a degree, the other has a crystal ball.
That's exactly right. Exactly right.
Not to discount the effectiveness, of course, so.
Not at all. Richfield School Board. Okay. Transportation Commission?
We did not meet in August.
Okay. Chamber of Commerce?
Longtime Chamber President Steve Lindgren retired at the beginning of August. We have an interim director in place, and they're working on hiring the replacement for Steven.
And Dr. Slaughterback gave his kind of a state of the schools, and there was also an update from Mr. Wellington on the movement at the old Kmart site. Well, I guess we should start calling it the LA Fitness Site.
It has a formal name. It's Lyndale Station.
Lyndale Station, yes. I apologize for that. Lyndale Station.
That's no problem. Thanks. Any other items?
And forgive me for not asking this sooner. Is there any progress, or is anything going to be happening soon with that property that was supposed to be used by that auto dealer or auto body shop or something like that that was going on 12th Avenue and?
Yeah, I can give an update on that. They did receive their approvals. If I had to guess, it would be February from us. I talked, I spoke with their representatives maybe six weeks ago, and the answer I received was that they really only construct one store at a time, and we're in their queue. And to the, if there are other stores ahead of us that have delays, that pushes everything else out, and that has been the case, that other stores ahead of us are delayed. So, but they still plan on constructing. In our early conversations with them, they had told us multiple times that they do no construction in winter because you incur additional winter costs. So, my suspicion is that they would not start construction until next spring.
Is there a time on that, John, as far as the?
Yeah, it's a year.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
And I did make them aware of that when I talked to them.
So, a year from February?
Right. A year from, I don't remember, but that's my guess, is February.
Okay, okay. Just one other quick update. Menards, are they proceeding on schedule, on time? All expectations from your department are okay?
Yes.
Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Good meeting. Well, hey, I tried.
Not that he, the chair.
I figure you gotta discuss it if you think.